We'll call the Star City Council meeting to order is September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven P M. Can we all have you join me? Let's say the pledge of allegiance.
There we go. Okay. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilman Hershey.
Present.
Councilman Keys.
Here.
Councilwoman Nielsen.
Here.
Councilwoman Jen- I'm sorry, Samson, not Jennifer.
It's here.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Onto item four, consent agenda. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of: A. Findings of facts and conclusion of law for: A. Inspiration Homes Irene Wilson, R Z two zero oh eight, D A two zero oh seven; B. Domestic Violence Proclamation; C. Constitution Week Proclamation; 4B. Final Plats, 4BA, Greendale Subdivision Final Plat Phase Three, F B two thousand and thirteen; and 4BB, Moon Valley Estates Final Plat, F B dash two zero dash fourteen.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Keys?
Two items. First of all, when I vote on this, I will not be voting on item four A A. I'll be excusing myself from that, but also with your permission, I'd like to read the Domestic Violence Proclamation into the record out loud.
Absolutely, and then we'll have Ms. Jennifer read the Constitution Week Proclamation as well. Then we'll approve it.
Domestic Violence Proclamation, whereas domestic violence is defined as abusive behavior in a personal relationship that gives one member control and power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic, or psychological actions or threats. And whereas an estimated one in four women and one in seven men will face domestic abuse in their lifetime, and in two thousand and eighteen, there were five thousand two hundred and eighty-four calls for service related to domestic violence and sexual assault in Ada County. And whereas, a range of services and programs exist throughout the Treasure Valley providing safety, healing, and freedom from domestic abuse and sexual assault, including forensic exams and medical care, secure shelters, court advocacy, counseling, childcare, as well as case management. And whereas, the City of Star is an important partner with the Women's and Children's Alliance in phases of hope to provide a safety net of crisis services and create a community where individuals thrive in safe, healthy relationships. Now therefore, Mr. Mayor, I, Trevor H. Chadwick, Mayor of the City of Star Idaho, hereby join national and local officials in proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Star.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the Constitution Week Proclamation, whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty marks the two hundred and thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate that occasion. And whereas, public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Trevor H. Chadwick, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Star and the counties of Ada and County, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us throughout, through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause this yellowed City of Star to be affixed this fifteenth day of September of the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second with those readings. Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
For item A, I will also be standing from A A.
A A, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're gonna go on to item five A, the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen audit by Jordan Swire. I think he's on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm gonna share my screen here.
Perfect.
And there should be, the audit report should be showing up now. So like Mayor said, I'm Jordan Swire from Swire John and Associates. And I'm gonna briefly go over the audit for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. If you have questions, please stop me. I'm more than happy to go into more detail. Otherwise, I'll just kind of hit some of the high points. So on number page one of the audit, this is the, our opinion on your financial statement. So what this says, first of all, is that these are your financial statements. Everything, um.
Don't touch any of that. Hang on a second, Jordan. I would rather have all sorts of noise than the lack of noise that we had before. So I don't want to touch any of the equipment back there on that. Thank you. Sorry, Jordan, go ahead.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Then turn it down right there. I just see everybody looking at the machines back there. I just don't want anything to happen.
It's very delicate setup. Do not touch.
I can talk a little quieter. Is that better?
Yes.
That's, that's a little better, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, all right, so this report, what it says is that we looked at your financial statement. We looked at how things were being done and looked at, and that in our opinion, everything's materially correct. What that really means for you is that the financial statements you're looking at on the council meeting, you can rely on those. Those are accurately showing you what's going on. From there, we're gonna jump to page five. This is your balance sheet for the year. You can see, the general fund ended with two point one million in cash. A short-term investment of about three hundred thousand dollars. New this year is this investment in building the one point eight million. That's the money that was loaned to Star Fire to build the new building. That's the amount that's owed back to you if they decide to buy that out. Some receivables, the property tax and other miscellaneous receivables. Accounts payable of just over three hundred and twenty-two thousand there. Also new this year is the parking impact fees fund. Those impact fees have to be segregated out because of the requirements, what they were used. So at the end of the year, you had one point, just over one point three million dollars sitting there for those impact fees. Any question on that balance sheet?
Mayor Chadwick?
Councilman Nielsen?
Yeah, I'd just like a point of clarification that we actually did not have a loan with Star Fire Department that was a lease with an option to purchase, and they executed that option to purchase.
You're correct. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, yeah. So, yeah, it wasn't a loan, but, and that amount there is what was initially City of Star put in the lease, plus the agreed upon interest with that buyback agreement.
Yeah, no question on the amount. I just wanted the record to be, be clear on that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, sir? Mr. Jordan? Okay, no, sir.
All right, so then I'll jump here to page seven. This is your income statement for the year. You see the general fund had a net increase of six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the year. Your impact fees had a net increase of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the year. Then down here in these transfers, this is, there was an impact fee, money from prior years that we moved to segregate into its own fee, is what that's doing. So that's what caused a little bit of a decrease in the fund balance of the general fund. But again, that wasn't from operations. It was because of moving out just over a thousand of the impact fees. Any question on the income statement there?
Any questions?
All right.
Okay, no, sir.
All right, so there, I'll move forward. Here, this is just a quick breakout of where the money was sitting at September thirtieth. That external investment pool of one point one million, that's the money you had with the state L G I T. You had just over four hundred thousand in some money market accounts, and then just over three hundred thousand in some short-term seed certificates of deposit. So that's, at the end of the year, that's where your money was setting. The rest was setting in your checking account. From there, I'm gonna jump forward to page seventeen. This just shows what was budgeted versus what actually happened for the year. I see you budgeted to bring in three point five million. You actually brought in four point seven, or about one point two million more that was anticipated in the general fund. You budgeted to bring, to spend three point eight million. You ended up spending four million, or about two hundred and eighty thousand more than you had budgeted. But looking at your budget, you had originally anticipated spending about two hundred and eighty-seven of your reserve, and again, just from operations, the reserve would have increased by almost seven hundred thousand. And then you had that eight hundred thousand moved over to the impact fee fund. From there, I'm just gonna point these out. This, here on page twenty, is a good report to go back and look at. This just breaks out into more detail, the revenue items in the general fund, kind of what's going into each of those areas. And same thing, twenty-one through twenty-two, does the same thing and breaks out into more detail of where all those expenses are by line item. I won't take the time unless you have any you want me to go through, but a good report to go back and look at. This is the basic financial statements. Any questions on those?
Any questions? What? None. There's none, sir.
From there, oh, thank you. From there, every year, in the state of Idaho, government entities, in addition to the financial audit, we also look at internal controls and at compliance. This is our report on that. We did not see any issues this year. Felt that controls were in place. We saw evidence, multiple eyes looking at invoices and looking at bank statements. And we did not see any compliance issues. So overall, a good clean audit report, everything. All things considered, went smooth on our side. We were able to get everything that we needed. So no issues from us. That's all I have. Any questions for me on the audit or anything else?
Any further questions about auditor there?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no, sir. We're good.
All right, so either it did me or next you'll just wanna make a motion to accept the audit report. So I appreciate your time.
You bet. We have it actually listed as item six A for tonight's meeting already.
Okay, and I, I didn't have the agenda, so I wasn't sure, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. On to item five B, Percy from Mr. Hampton?
Mr. Mayor, Hampton? I do have a handout if you'd like.
Is that microphone on? Just not plugged in? Hang on a second. No. Thank you, Councilman. All right, sir, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks for the invite back. My comment's very brief. I remember this, I think it was in November of last year, but having a couple of updates, we did finish our fiscal year in, as of June thirtieth. It was quite the interesting year with the stock market, the way that it went. In March, we were all the way down to a negative six, 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 six point three percent return. We were able to rebound by eight to a year to post a net return of two point seven percent. Not our goal of hitting seven percent every year, but we're never gonna hit seven percent every year. We wanna average seven percent. So we were able to maintain our current contribution rates. Probably one of the most drastic declines in the stock market that has happened in a long time. The recovery was almost as quick. We're having a tremendous start to this year. So the, the, as of this morning, our total fund balance is back up to about nineteen point six billion. And we're in a very good spot, end of the year, at about eighty-seven percent funded ratio with twenty-year amortization period, which means that as long as we hit seven percent on average over the long term, which we look thirty to sixty years out, as long as we hit that seven percent average, we will be a hundred percent funded at some point within twenty years. That goes up and down all the time, so it is a moving target that we operate with. So that's kind of a brief update of where we're at currently. Contribution rates have stayed the same. I really am here to answer any questions that you may have or provide additional information that the council may like. That's Mr. Mayor.
So, so, all right, sounds good. So tonight, we are actually gonna do some discussion as a council to decide if we're gonna join the Percy program on there. I do have a question for you in looking at Percy. If, are, are the employees, if we decide to join Percy, able to transfer their four fifty-sevens into that four oh one K choice program?
Per statute, any, any active member of Percy has automatically an access to the choice plan. So absolutely, that is, that could happen on any, anybody that's an active member.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of, of Mr. Hampton?
Mr. Hampton, thanks for coming this evening. Are you aware of any other entities in this part of the state who are not members of Percy? Are we, are we the Lone Ranger out there at this point? And the reason I'm asking is because I know that the City of Star has to compete with all of these other agencies to attract and retain talent, and an important part of that is our benefits package.
So Councilman Keys, you're pretty much alone in this area of the world of, of size. There's always smaller entities that come in that, we just entered two entities last month, two small rural fire districts that were three and five employees. But I would expect that City of Star's probably twenty to thirty employees, maybe even larger than that. Anybody of size, of that size, there's not many left that are. We currently have eight hundred and, over eight hundred and thirty employers that are participating in Idaho as the sole governmental pension plan in the state.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, you know, from time to time, you read in the paper about different municipalities across the country who have these ginormous unfunded pension obligations. Can you tell me briefly how Percy sits in the context of a future risk for a municipality such as Star going forward?
Councilman, that is a great question because we hear this all the time. Kentucky, as a matter of fact, leads the nation in the number of articles that are written about an unfunded plan. The key piece that you have to understand when you have a pension is, it's the time value of money. It's a very simple concept. When you put money in over a period of time, as long as you're consistently putting money in, you gain, you reap the rewards on that. That is the beauty of the Idaho plan and the Idaho legislative plan that they put together. You are mandated to pay. Time value of money that occurs, we've never had, we've never had an institution not contribute because it's against the law to not contribute. We've never had the state, the legislature step in and say, and write I O U's. For example, Kentucky was a hundred percent funded twenty-five years ago. They did not make another contribution to the plan for twenty-five years. That's why they're significantly underfunded. Almost every institute, or every public pension plan that you run into that has a funding issue, almost invariably, there was a point in time they stopped making the contributions. Idaho has that written in law. You can't, you can't avoid your obligation in that. And it's something that has continued on and why we're as solid as we are. To say that we're eighty-seven percent funded after this last year is pretty tremendous when you really think about it. We were ninety-two percent funded going into last year and absorbed one of the worst stock market roller coasters in history. Our portfolio rebounded very nicely as we continue to operate exactly like we expected to. It's got some downside protection plus some upside protection. We're never going to be the leader in, in investment returns. That is not the plan. The plan is to protect and make a reasonable return on our investments over a long period of time. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I actually have a question for you. What is the sense of city staff when you meet with them in staff meetings about reporting this? And what is your recommendation?
About ninety-five percent, I'll say, the city staff would like to see us go on Percy. And I would recommend that we do go on Percy for some of the things that you talked about and being one of the only entities here in this valley. It makes recruiting a little bit more challenging, right? We actually had several people in this last hiring cycle decline to be interviewed because we didn't have Percy, because they kept rolling over. But I, I do, so what is the vesting time for, there's two different vesting things, right? One for, for elected officials and one for the employees, right? Can you tell me what those are?
Absolutely. Elected officials are vested immediately, and that's because of their term is less than the standard vesting schedule, which is five years. So to vest in the pension, the base plan, you need to have five years of service, service months. So sixty months of service. Once you've achieved that, then you're guaranteed a lifetime benefit based on our formula, which is basically, the easiest way to explain it is for every year of service you get, you get two percent of your final average pay when you retire, and that's a lifetime benefit. But I can't, the other piece that employees need to understand is every dollar that is contributed on their behalf, or not on their behalf, by them. So the employee portion of the contribution is always theirs. So if they put a dollar in, they get that dollar back even if they leave within that five-year vesting schedule. So I just wanna make sure that that's readily apparent to the employees as well.
Okay. Do they get interest or off of their money or?
Guaranteed one percent return per year, even if the fund was as money.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Dave, do you have any questions? Jennifer?
No, no, I don't. I have, just reflecting on the last one. Oh, maybe one. It is an all or nothing, correct?
That is correct. It is all employees or non-employees.
And so if you're drawing a Percy from somewhere else, you can't join this, any entity with this Percy, correct?
Let me clarify your question. So.
Please do exactly. I asked it wrong.
If you're talking about another pension plan that's outside of the public employee retirement system in Idaho, our Percy, so an Oregon Percy, for example, you are able to come in, even if you're drawing in other states or another pension, you are still eligible if you come into an eligible position. What you can't do is if you're currently receiving a benefit from Percy Idaho, you can no longer be an active eligible employee, which means you can't be a full-time employee, or you have to suspend your benefit and accrue more months. And then when you re-retire, then you can, you'll have additional months that will be added on to your service.
I was just wondering, if someone's drawing it, and they decide to be foolish enough to run for a city council and get elected, would they have to stop on that on Percy? This is something I thought about.
Yeah, it depends, and, and I use that answer a lot because there are avenues for elected appointed officials to continue to receive their benefit and, and move into an elected appointed position. Primarily, one of the requirements is age. So if you're age sixty-two or older and you get an elected appointed and you're currently receiving a benefit, you can continue to receive the benefit. But every single situation is different. There is also the choice of the council and of the, of the council to, the council is not in Percy. And that, that could be also another choice that can be made. So the all or nothing is really talking about the employees. And the elected appointed is a little bit different and can actually be structured differently as to where you have employees and, and elected appointed out. Every one of those situations, I, I definitely think we need to talk about if you're interested in that because there're gonna be different caveats that we can look at.
Thank you. Any further questions? Jennifer?
I know this is all new to you.
Yeah, it is new. I did attend the, the meeting last year though, when you presented, so I know very little about it. A little bit, and I appreciate Mr. Keys, your, your question to the mayor because that was my question as well about if the staff wants this. So I, I wasn't aware though that council can opt out of, of it. Do we, do we have any questions about that?
So, so is, will you say elected, is it all or nothing on the elected, or is?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so if there is, especially in rural Idaho, there will be certain entities where the city council or a irrigation district that has certain elected or appointed positions, they will opt out, but still have their employees in. And, and the reason they do that is, one of the reasons that can happen sometimes is if you have elected appointed position, somebody's receiving the benefit, and they don't meet their requirement, they have to suspend their benefit for their fifty dollars a meeting kind of thing. So it kind of can limit the pool of opportunity that you've got there. So it is kind of, it is an all or nothing as well. You can't have one council seat and have another one out.
Okay. How about council and mayor? I mean, I mean, is, is the mayor include that, or is that different?
Mayor's different.
Okay.
It's typically the council seats.
Okay.
And typically, the mayor is deemed a full-time position.
Not in this city.
But it's definitely discussions we can have. They're different opportunities.
Okay, sure. Because that clears up, I think, quite a better question there too as well because there was some, some concern about that as well, so. Any more questions, Ms. Jennifer? Mr. Nielsen? Councilperson, do you have any questions? Nothing? All right. Will you hang out though? You might hang out because we're gonna talk about it and make decisions. I have questions. I would like to invite you back to answer if that's possible.
I'd have the pleasure of it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Appreciate it. Okay, you. Onto item six A, motion by council to approve the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen audit report.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Keys?
Like to make a motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen audit report.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. They have any further discussion? Okay?
Sorry. Yes, so just a comment that I have. I found this very interesting. The, the end of the year budget piece, I haven't seen anything like that in our monthly reports. And just looking at, you know, you can see some projects that didn't happen, that were in our budget. And so I think it'd be really helpful if we can see some sort of similar report, you know, every three months or something.
So you will, you're gonna, starting with this next budget year, you're gonna probably see it on a monthly basis.
Okay, fantastic.
That's my goal, to get it out to you on that.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Keys? Oh, I saw you reaching for your button. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing non-opposed, that motion carries. Onto item six B, Percy discussion and decision. Discussion?
What kind of numbers have you got around on this?
What do you mean? Number wise, when you're asking numbers, what, which numbers?
What sort of contribution levels are we looking at?
So we, so in our actual budget for this year, we budgeted for contribution levels with Percy included, which is, what is it, eleven percent for the city? Is that what it is, I think, eleven point nine or something like that for employees' pay on there? And so the actual number, I can't remember what it is on our budget, but it's included in our two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget year. Now, what made it interesting to me is the fact that I know some of the concern on the council was, was the, the benefit for the council on it, right? Where you, but hearing that we can actually separate that, maybe that's the option that you go with. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys to decide if you decide to go that route.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hershey?
Since finding out that an elected body like the council is separate from the mayor, the council is a part-time position. It is not, in my mind, designed to be a position for life. Come into a few terms, lose your hair, and get out. So.
That's happened to a few.
I do think, and I personally do not think, and this is just my personal opinion, that Percy should be something that the council should be concerned with, with our positions. But I'm definitely open to discussion for that.
I would totally agree with that.
So, so, so we, so here's the thing. I think it's important that, that the city gets into this Percy discussion for long-term benefit of the employees and for the future success of the city as far as hiring quality and high talent employees that have better experience around here, right? I do know that we have a couple of employees that, that will not benefit from the Percy. We'll have to discuss how, how that works, right? But at some point, if we're going to get on Percy, sometimes you just have to pull off the Band-Aid and just, and just do it and move forward, and we work out the details of those individuals that are going to be impacted.
So Mayor Chadwick, for those individuals that are impacted, could we do a one-time payment into their current retirement system before we transfer, you know, transfer them to Percy? That, that would be the equal of?
I'll have to ask Chris. Is George still on the phone? Oh, that's right, anybody, yeah.
I think there's ways to do that. I think that we need to make sure we have the auditors involved and make sure that those are transferred appropriately. But I do think that there are mechanisms to make sure that people that are being impacted by this which is accountability kind of held almost so that they are, because exactly, even though there's not that total benefit because they may not be able to invest in the remaining time they have in the city.
Mayor Chadwick?
Yes, sir. Councilman Nelson?
I'd like to move that we keep the city council at status quo and that we provide for the mayor and the rest of the city employees Percy for our retirement solution and direct staff to work out the details of, with our accountants and auditors, addressing any disparity that we may be causing for the staff members who are, will be negatively affected.
Okay, we've got our motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and double second. On that, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
Just, just for the record, I did pull up the budget and the difference between the retirement program that we've had and Percy for this year would be fourteen thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents per the salaries we had budgeted this year.
Correct. Okay. And I, can I, on discussion, would you amend your motion to have it effective January one? So it gives us three months to put stuff together and a target date for that?
So amended.
And I also would request that you amend your motion to give the mayor discretion in what it means to, to make those employees whole who may be negatively impacted by this.
I believe that was the intent of my motion, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so we got the amended motion. Do we have an amended second?
If my second is one accounted, I'll amend my second.
Okay. We'll go for that. So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hershey?
Obviously Percy's been talked about with all employees so far, and you have some sort of plan in mind, I assume?
I do.
Okay. So I am supportive of it, but I've also been very vocal on that you have a good plan in place.
Right, now we do. I got an idea. I will work through that. So, okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So we will be getting with you eventually here on that. Okay, item, item six C, amended intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the Star Fire District. Chris, do you want to talk to this or do you want me to say what Gabriel was asking?
Mayor members of the council, you saw a previous version of this several months ago when the city first adopted an impact fees for the Star Fire District. This is an update that there aren't a lot of changes. One of the main changes is that it's since an administrative fee that the city will collect with each impact fee it collects, I can't remember if it's fifteen or twenty dollars. But it's a small percentage of the, of the fees that are collected, but allows the city to be reimbursed for the administrative costs to the city to collect the fees and do, and process it since the district doesn't have the legal authority to do that. But otherwise, it's, it's very similar to the agreement that you previously approved. We're just updating it and amending it to just kind of fit how things are currently operating.
Any, any questions, Chris, on this amended agreement?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the amended intergovernmental agreement with Star Fire District. Do I need to read the title or is that good enough?
Okay, we got our motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Being the fire liaison, I can say that these guys are diligent and good people.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
We just gave you a preview.
Yeah, we gave you a preview.
I think you're surprised.
Councilman Hershey?
Aye.
Councilman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Solmanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nielsen?
Aye.
Hearing all ayes, that motion is approved. Thank you. Onto item six D, the South River Subarea Bid and Contract Approval. This is a pretty exciting time for us to get this south of the, of the river area planned out. It's a blank slate. It's a clean canvas and, and we're going to get a lot of great input, I think, from our citizens. And I'll have Sean talk to it here. And you may want to grab your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Staff, me and myself and Brian, along with Mayor Chadwick and Council President Hershey, got together, reviewed the three proposals that we received for the South River Subarea Plan. We did that last week. We compared the three proposals, compared costs, services to be provided, extra, extra services that, that could be needed.
You're okay. I need to keep going.
Extra, extra services that, that might be needed. And the forward made a recommendation to council and put an order, an order at one, two, three for those three companies. The three companies were Kibbley Horn, Logan Simpson, and Makers Design. Staff is recommending to the council that they accept the proposal for Makers Design, Architecture Planning and Urban Design as the preferred consultant team for the RFP, for the South River Subarea Plan. I'll stand for questions.
Questions of staff?
Mayor Chadwick?
Councilwoman Nielsen?
I'm just wondering, do you have a spreadsheet that could be easily brought up that shows side-by-side comparison?
Oh, we're trying to get our, our system. Alls, alls we see right now is the video. I can't, I can't access any of my computer.
We give you the three back pages that have the proposals.
Right, they're, they're the individuals. I was just hoping maybe a comparative view. Could you go into, you know, in absence of that, go into some detail on why you were recommending this one? Is it just cost or what?
No. So we looked at several components when making our decision. We looked at Idaho project experience. We looked at, obviously, we looked at the budget range. That wasn't our, that wasn't our deciding factor. The proposal that we are recommending actually came in, came in within budget, but it was, it was the middle, the middle proposed amount of the, of the three proposals. We also looked at the teams in, as a whole, what, what, what the, what the team was bringing in service-wise. And we did, and we did look at Idaho and Treasure Valley experience as well as one of our consults.
Did we have any examples of work that they've done in the past that we, that were reviewed?
Yes, we do. We did. The Makers Design team had.
So I, I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I did notice in the RFP that it states that how, how, excuse me, how the selection criteria, it says the cost would be thirty percent. Let's see, reference from other clients, attesting to firms, twenty-five percent. And then it has, you know, a number of items for the criteria percentages. Did you do something like that when you rated these?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
That, that experience question for Councilman Nielsen. Makers Design, they, they've worked on Julia Davis, Mixed Cheese Development Plan, St. Louis Medical Center Master Plan, Mountain Community Planning, Shadow Valley Plan Community, Carter Farmway Rezone, Council Downtown Vitalization, Three Rivers Transportation Study, South Point Byway, Napa Downtown Street State. So those were the.
That was answering Councilwoman Nielsen's question?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions on that?
Do you have that scoring sheet anywhere available that we can see?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we did verbally with our, with our media, for, for the purpose.
I think if I could, I can't get this to pull up. There's a, I gotta say. Something happened with our system that, what'd you get? No, I didn't touch any cords.
It's just cords. I had something I'm wondering.
Where's my, where's my IT specialist? We can't get this to, we lost our, we lost our.
See, because we're working right now. Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think there must be a connection when you guys, when you guys are walking around, it's cutting off and moving on. Yeah, it's got a cable down there.
Because after the audit presentation, that's when it switched.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess while we work on this, okay? Councilwoman Nielsen, you have?
Continue. Just before you do, will you just, on the record, just make sure it's clear that we've restarted the meeting at enough time?
Okay. We are going to restart the meeting at seven fifty-four PM at Star City Hall. Councilwoman Nielsen, you have a question?
So I guess just continued questions. Some of the, and, and what they're stemming from, let me preface my questions by saying my intent here is not to be critical. But I'm, I'm looking at what's in the packet for, for the recommended company. And they've included some pictures of things that they've done. And I'm looking at it and thinking that this is not, this is not wow. This is not, you know, quality that I would have expected for somebody coming to say, give me your business. You know, they highlighted this waterfront property and then shown a couple of examples. And, you know, one, one is apartments with, with unkempt grass growing over a path in front of them. Another one is a, is a boat launch with nothing but lawn going up to it, a sidewalk going across. I mean, there's, there's nothing here that demonstrates that they can actually plan a community. You know, the, the drawing, of course, of St. Louis complex, you know, obviously, they can place the buildings on, on a drawing. But I guess in my mind, I was expecting, you know, a pitch more like we saw in our workshop a couple of weeks ago. This is what we can come in and wow, look what we can help you do in your community. So I, I guess my question really is, what did you guys see that I'm not seeing here in this packet that, that made you say, yep, those are our, that's our team?
Well, I guess, as to answer your question, I guess we didn't really give a whole lot of credit to the pictures and looked more at the, at the qualifications, the, the comparison with, with the RFP and what we were asking for. I mean, it wasn't really, it wasn't really a task of them to come up with a plan as part of the RFP. And they were just using those examples of what they've done. Probably just prettyening up their packet, basically what they're doing, give us, give us some color to it. But we focused more on the qualifications and the specifics that if Mayor Chadwick would put the comparison up, we'd go through that a little bit of that.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying. I just, we didn't really.
Well, and having not been there in the conversations, again, I'm coming at this from, like I said, I'm not intending any disrespect or thinking that we didn't do a good job. I'm just really trying to understand because when I look at stuff like this, I expect people to put their best foot forward. And if this is the best foot forward, then I'm concerned. But, you know, your explanation makes, makes sense, but I'm not sure it satisfies the, the little skepticism right there that, that best foot forward would have provided.
So you go through the comparison or? This is the one that I got up here, right?
Yeah, if you guys can see that, that's, this is just our breakdown, right, put together. It just, it just goes through the company makeup. It goes through experience that has the breakdown of the. It goes through experience that has the breakdown of the Idaho projects from the three.
It's rolling out.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you make that any, can you enlarge that at the bottom here?
Oh, you don't want me to go that direction?
That's probably not.
Does that work?
Yeah. That's better, yeah. So just so council can see on their monitors. So this is all, this was all pulled from their, their, uh, from the three proposals and then, and then compared. And then it was broken down into the RFP tasks, you see.
So it, it actually says that they did not break it out?
Yeah, we had, we had to go in and actually.
May I go too fast on that, Kevin? Sorry.
Well, I'm not reading at all, but.
And then the project, the project phases.
These two.
And the, the deliverables. And then the very bottom are the, were the costs. He's pointed, pointed out that, um, in addition to the base costs that we had, we have some additional cost of a, of potential floodplain study and traffic study. So the very bottom, that, that last, that last line, was three, those three amounts that would include, uh, the total cost, um, of the three. And in the bottom is the amended cost if we did those two additional, uh, or had them do those two additional studies.
Which would be the floodplain and the traffic.
Correct. And that'll determine after we get further down, so further, further through the process, um, and start working with ACHD and ITD.
Councilwoman Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. Um, so yes, I did re, I did review all three of these proposals here. And, um, I, um, I was very impressed with the makers and their local projects that they worked on. You know, I mean, they obviously have a very tight connection here with Star. And I think that, um, that would be a valuable, uh, you know, resource that we can, we can use. And it would help save some money there as well. My only concern with this one was that the deliverables weren't as clear as the other two. But, you know, I, I almost would like a little bit more time to review this information that you have in front of us here. Cause this is a very big project and I don't, I don't want it to be just another plan that we have, you know, on, on a shelf somewhere. And so, um, you know, I think the timing of the project and, you know, I know that they, all of these have a, a timeline in them. But I think that we really want to be deliberate with whatever, whatever one that we want to go with. So I would, I would, uh, like, I, I don't know. I think if we could have, you know, another, maybe if we could postpone this or.
So let me, let me ask you a question, Chris. If they select the top two that they want to see, can we have them come into a workshop and do a presentation to us with their, about their bid? And, and then we can come back to a public hearing and do, um, have the council select based off of that? I mean, I know, I, I, so, so here's the thing, I, I know we had this pretty aggressive schedule time, time wise, but I think it's better to get it right than it is to, to push it. I guess to get it done in February, if we have to push it out to March to be done, that's March, I guess, right?
Mayor, I guess one question on that. Was, this is done as a, um, a request for qualifications where the, the, um, decision is not based solely on price, correct? It's based on qualifications.
Correct.
And so the city should have a scoring mechanism that it uses to determine whether or not all of its needs are met, uh, which could be, um, you know, there's no magic mechanism where table how that looks as if the city can create on its own. If that has not been done, that can be done and then that can be used by the council to score, uh, as you invite entities in to, to provide a presentation to the city. But there, the city should have some, um, specific guidelines that it's using so that it doesn't appear that it's just kind of a, you know.
I like your picture, Doug.
Right, yeah, or, or anything else, right? You know, you happen to be my next door neighbor, so I'm picking you, or, um, whatever it is that it created so that it's, um, a fair process for people that are looking from the outside. And so I would just, um, again, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with having them come in and, and have a presentation with a larger group than, um, than just the initial bids are put forward. You, you may want all three to come just so that it's a fair process. And one doesn't say, hey, wait a second, we didn't know that there would be this third option. Had we known that, we might have submitted something differently so we could get our foot in the door and actually have a conversation with council. Cause I, I don't remember exactly what the RFP looked like, so whoever the third person, the third group is, I may feel like the process is now changing midstream. But with that caveat, having amended us a bit with the workshop and doing presentations so, so that full council can hear what they all have to say and make a decision based on that, uh, is appropriate.
So, so I just, you know, when I'm thinking about this a little bit, to make sure it's fair, do we have a right to not invite? We just have one group in at one time, make them leave, have somebody else come in so they're not piggybacking off of each other in that workshop?
Right, yeah, you don't, they don't need to, um, otherwise the third person, the third group or second group, whatever gets to, probably has some advantage that way. So I think it's certainly appropriate to just have them in one at a time without having, you know, some of the, any of the other groups being able to watch the presentation and, um, modify it differently based on questions that are asked or, um, how the presentation looks or what the focus is or anything like that. They all come in with their own, um, own work and the council can make their decision based on that.
So, so the, so for what I, what I'm thinking, so we need to get the score sheet together, set up a, a workshop. Do we want to limit, limit the time for the presentation?
Yeah, thirty minutes maybe.
Mr. Mayor, I can talk a lot about this. I mean, it's called verbal proposals and it's done in Department of Defense an awful lot. And I can tell you this, if you're an expert in the field, they're really good. If you're not an expert in the field, it's a flash. It's, it's all who gives the better pictures in a verbal, public speaking environment. If, uh, I, I do not feel a layman such as myself will gain much, if anything, from them. If you can't get it from the written proposal, you're probably not going to get it from the verbal unless you absolutely understand the field that you're talking about. I've seen this before and also in the federal government, if your, uh, evaluation criteria does not state, then you do not do. I don't know if that holds true on a city level or a state level, but I know that in the federal level, if we were to engage in this, and especially only invite two, we would be under what's called a protest and we would lose. I don't know.
So Chris, your thoughts on that?
I, I, obviously somebody has to file the protest, but I do agree with Councilman Hershey. And if you only invite two, you do open the door for the third to say, hey, wait a second, how come we aren't a part of this? Uh, you didn't have that in your documents, you were gonna invite everybody and now, um, you know, now, now the process is unfair and working, you know, unfairly eliminated. So I, I think if, to the extent you're going down this path, I think you should invite all three so they all have an equal chance.
I would actually amend the solicitation or RFP and have them return a signed copy saying that an oral presentation is anticipated. And have a set of strict questions you're gonna ask. You can have follow-ons on those questions, but all the same questions must be asked or same areas of criteria that you want them to discuss must be, it's almost like a job interview. You have their standard questions and then you can lead on from there, but you have to ask your standard questions.
Thoughts from council?
Just gave mine. I got you, I got yours.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gaze, so I have a question for Councilman Hershey. So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you think that having a workshop would be, um, of limited value? And that you think that we probably have everything we need in front of us to make a decision?
It's possible. I mean, I, I read these, I was not part of the second meeting. I had been called in, uh, for other meetings that I was obligated to. Uh, so I wasn't part of the delineation that they've given us here, uh, but I was part of the initial. What I'm saying is, just plain simple, we all have our expertise. If you're not an expert in the field, it's like going and buying a car because it's shiny. You know, and that's what they're gonna do. They're gonna show you the polish on the outside. But if you don't know how to dig in and ask the right questions, it's, uh, it, it's a point where you're, you're almost going off of a personality versus the actual established criteria of what you're looking for. And I'm just saying, it's, it's not dangerous, but it's, it's, it, it can have, uh, factors of, uh, you know, where people are, are good enough to steer you away from the concerns and steer you to what they call the positives. It's, uh, you know, they can lead the conversation to show you only the shiny bright side and never turn it over and show you presenting rust. It, it's just that you need an expert in there that understands what questions to ask. Uh, you give them a list of the questions you're gonna ask and, uh, you go from there. So I'm just saying, myself, just being very honest, I probably wouldn't get much more out of it. I'd be happy to sit and listen. I do enjoy them. But, uh, in reality, my goal or my job is to take a summary that the technical experts give you and go from that. And that's, that's how I, I do it, to keep myself out of the weeds, but make sure there's a sound business decision being made and the why.
So in the, uh, in the RFP, we did publish a selection criteria.
Yes.
And, uh, uh, it was approved by the council. And do you believe as part of the selection committee that, that, that criteria was followed leading up to the recommendation?
I believe it was, but also if you want to go into orals, you simply tell them. If it just, you, you're not in a point where you have a contract. You don't have a contract right now. You have a solicitation. I'm gonna use that term loosely. I know it's an RFP. But it, it's a solicitation of type, which means the playing field that we're establishing is still in our hands. All you have to do in a solicitation is make sure it's fair. You can do almost anything you want, but it has to be applied fairly to those, especially after a bid is closed. So you just simply send an amendment saying, we're asking for oral presentations, we're asking these questions. Do you agree to this? Yes or no? If they don't agree to it, well, that's fine. They, they made a conscious choice, but you offer it to all, all three. And that's, uh, that's how I would do it.
Mayor Chadwick.
Councilman Nielsen?
I, I think what I'm looking for, and I like this idea, I think what I'm looking for in, in this is really to just have some, you know, some examples, have them come in and present examples of work that they've done. If I'm to, to go off of what they've submitted here in these proposals and, you know, not being an expert in sub area planning, uh, I'm going to look at it a whole lot differently than an expert would. So I'm going to look at things much like I do when I, when I get a resume for a job. And I'm going to look for misspelled words and I'm going to look for, you know, organization and other traits and characteristics that might lead, uh, me to believe one way or another about the kind of work that I might receive. And what I'm seeing in our recommended proposal here tonight are a lot of red flags in that regard. And I would probably lean more toward, um, the Logan Simpson application, or proposal, I mean, uh, than I would on the makers based on those facts. And so for me, I'm, I'm looking for, for more, a more concrete method of determination and being able to arrive at a, a decision that we can all agree on. And I guess in my mind, one of the best ways to do that is, hey, show us what you've actually done.
Yeah, I agree to that. Like a bucket of Legos and say, build something?
Yep.
So, oh my goodness. The, uh, so, so we can put the score, to get the scoring criteria sheets together for the council based off of that. And then, uh, we can send out that amendment thing that you were talking about to all, all, all of them to come to a workshop. I guess we gotta look at timing. I mean, when do you want to do this? There's a lot of workshops going on between now and the end of the month.
We're gonna be pushed out till, we've pushed out till October, uh, like mid to late October.
To, to, for us to approve it?
To get a workshop, to get a workshop.
Get a workshop?
We're, we're shopped out for that next three weeks.
But we, I, I guess again, to do this right and make sure it's right, it's okay for us to modify and adjust our schedule on what we expect to have this completed. I mean, that's not an issue.
We have, we have to do that, which I think would be fine.
You can explain that modification to, in your letter requesting the, the oral presentation. And you can, you can explain that that's part of the modification as an extension of the, um, completion date.
Okay. Michael, you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so I, I'm feeling some urgency here. And, and, uh, I, I know that we had set the, the completion date on this partially around when Star Sewer Water is gonna go live with their lift station. Because, uh, I'm getting a sense that there's going to be an awful lot of interest in development in this South River area. Um, I know I, I've been involved in working on this thing since, I'm looking at a document here that I drafted on, on May tenth. And now it's September fifteenth and, and, and here we are. And I'm feeling like we've already lost a great deal of time. And I'm, um, okay with pushing this out a little bit, but to say we're gonna push this out to October and later to even get started is, is, uh, is, is frankly bothering my sense of urgency. I, I think we need to get rolling on this because if we don't, we're gonna be in trouble.
Well, I'll tell you what, we'll establish it. We'll, we'll have to look at the dates. I mean, not everybody's gonna be available at all times.
I understand that.
Right, and so we gotta, we, we gotta work through that, that concept with that process. And I get the urgency, I understand it completely, but I also want to make sure that this is right and that we do it right and we get the right, the right plan for the city. So it's not something like Councilwoman Jennifer says, sits on the shelf and flexes out.
No, I, well, I, the intent is to amend this, uh, or adopt this as an amendment into our comprehensive plan. It's hardly sitting on a shelf.
No, I get that, but we gotta get it right.
Let me ask this question with, uh, we'll just start with makers. Do you feel that you could sit down with them and convey your vision? Because that's what we're doing. Cause these, these are not concrete plans of exactly what they're gonna do. These are conceptual, therefore there's gonna be a lot of input from us. Do you feel they could carry your vision?
What I hear you saying is, is, is there a team fit, right? And, and if these.
That's the point.
And, and we want to make sure that we've got the right organization that's going to come in here that carries a vision and a planning approach with them that's going to, to yield a, a result that we're looking for. And looking at these proposals, I see what I'm looking for in the Logan Simpson proposal. I don't see anything close to what I'm looking for in the Makers proposal.
Well, I mean, I says though, what those pictures they showed you, was that their vision or were they conveying the vision of those that hired them?
That's something we should ask them.
So let me, okay.
I mean, if, if they're putting that forward as their, their example, and this is what we do, you'd think that they picked one that actually looks good.
So, so let me, let me ask this question, Sean. October one, a Thursday night, can we do a workshop that night? Cause we don't have anything scheduled that night. Then have this scheduled for approval on October sixth for our next council meeting. I, I think the contract has to be approved, right, or approved or the slack.
Well, the meeting that you invite everybody into, that could just be a special meeting of the council. And so if you wanted to do all of it that night, have all the presentations, then make a decision that night. You can do that, you don't have to postpone it to a regular meeting. It can be a. You can do that, you don't have to postpone it to a regular meeting, it could be a, it could be a, everything could be done on a special meeting.
I, I think that's a great idea, and I, you know, I feel the urgency too, I wanna, I wanna get going on this, but, and I, I don't wanna get going with an outfit that's gonna, you know, give us something that sits on the shelf. Jennifer and I have already helped produce a plan in this city that is sitting on the shelf, I'm not about to do it again.
So, are you good with October one? Okay, so we can schedule a meeting for October one? So do we need to make a motion on table this, Chris, or is this not a, it's not table item, right?
It's not a public hearing, right?
No.
It, it's not a public hearing, so it's not something to be initially, need to table for notice purposes. Uh, I mean, you certainly, as the mayor, have the authority to set a date for when it will be, um, reheared or whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting, it doesn't have to be, necessarily done by motion.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, so, in the essence of time now, I guess, we'll schedule a meeting, a special meeting, Sean, on October one?
Yep, a workshop and then a special-
A workshop and a, well, yeah, a workshop and a special meeting on October one, um, to have the all three in. Well, I'm gonna have a letter sent out this week.
I would give them a phone call tomorrow and tell them it's coming. Is there any time, you're giving fifteen days.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor Chawwic, I've got one last question on this.
Sure.
Was there anything in any of these proposals that you guys saw that would make you say, definitely not them?
Like, I, me, did you, what, you guys answer that?
Well, there were some perceived conflicts of interest that we, we had recognized, and it was in your memo that we gave you. That just should be misconsidered. So, if you look, look, if you look at, look at that memo, you can, you can see that.
But aside from that, no other qualifications or concerns about professional credentials, things like that?
No.
No. No, they're all, yeah, they're all very good, very good company.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and set up a meeting for October one and then have you guys call them. And send a letter, both, inviting them to that meeting, I guess, on October one with what Councilman Hershey said.
About, what, what'd you say, how'd you word that?
We're a whole proposal.
We're a whole proposal.
It's not a whole proposal. It's in the article.
Oh, okay, all right. So October one, you got it? Okay, are we, are we good with that?
All right.
All right, we'll move on to item, uh, six E, the public hearing for the Natera subdivision annexation and zoning. That one was tabled from August eighteenth, we're gonna have to table it again because we're still waiting for some-
ACHD.
ACHD reports on that with the changes that are, are being made on that project. So I think, what day would you wanna table it? Is it the sixth?
The sixth, yeah.
October sixth meeting?
We'll, we'll have it by then.
So we need to make a motion to table that, so October sixth, twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keyes?
I can make a motion that we table the North Tera subdivision annexation and zoning DA Plumery Platte private street to October sixth.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second?
Second, Ted.
You have a favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Item six F, the public hearing on the Canvas Back subdivision annexation, that one's gonna be tabled also till October sixth, twenty twenty.
Do we need a motion for that one?
I think we have the, we have the, we have the date served, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keyes?
I make a motion that we, uh, table the, uh, public hearing for the Canvas Back subdivision annexation and zoning Plumery Platte to October sixth, twenty twenty.
Okay, we got, we got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Finally, item, item six G. Chris, you're up. Public hearing on the Amazon Falls subdivision DA modification. We're gonna ask the council if they have any expert contact in this.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing?
None.
No.
Hearing none, we are gonna open this up to, I'm sorry, yeah, we're gonna open this up to, okay, go ahead, Chris, you can come up here and, and discuss.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chris Todd, fifty, uh, business address fifty-three North Plummer Road, Star Ride Out, eight-three-six-six-nine. Uh, here on behalf of AF Investments for Amazon Falls and the DA modification, uh, that we're doing in order to, uh, bring in the impact fees for ITD into the city. That's all I'm really here, other than what was on the staff report from Sean. I was hoping to actually have some public, uh, input in the beginning of the agenda, but I didn't see that that was on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda today.
It's not on the agenda today. Um, I did bring with me a guest tonight, uh, this is Maxine Schwannfeld. Uh, I have inputted a letter from her, um, into the city for your comprehensive plan workshops. We weren't able to attend the first one, we apologize. Uh, Maxine lives at forty-five oh five, uh, North Highway sixteen, she's lived there for thirty-five years.
Is it related to this?
No.
Hearing, so we can't talk about that right now?
Well, at least it's an introduction for the letter that was submitted.
All right. So the, the, uh, public hearing is simply to open the DA to modify it for the ITD proportion share?
That's correct.
Agreement? Any questions of the applicant? Okay, go ahead. And you can say, there's no one that's signed up to speak? Did you wanna talk anymore, Chris?
Yes, I did.
But related to this? All right.
Hey for effort.
That's right. Okay, uh, so, so we're gonna close the public hearing, uh, go to council deliberations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keyes? Uh, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, modification to the development agreement, uh, DA dash two-zero dash fourteen. Putting in a provision for, uh, uh, the proportion share agreement with ITD.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Ted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. On to item six H, the public hearing for the Gary Saunders annexation and zoning, zoning. Uh, again, we're gonna ask the council, do they, does anybody have any expert take communication?
None.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Dave? Oh, no, okay. Hearing none, um, do we have the applicant here? Could you come up here, say your name and?
Uh, Gary Saunders, uh, three-two-four-five North Wing Road, Star.
Okay, do you wanna tell us about your project?
Uh, at this point, I'm just asking to be annexed into the city with an R-two zoning. With a future development agreement, I guess.
Okay. Is there anybody signed up on the sheet over there? Okay, any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keyes?
Uh, Mr. Saunders, we, uh, as is, um, not unusual, haven't received the, uh, report from, uh, ACHD on this yet. Are you willing to, um, to accept whatever recommendations they make and, and, uh, as a addition to the, to the development agreement?
Yes.
So will we even get a report from ACHD on this anyway? Because there's no Plumery Platte to it.
Yeah, it'll, the, the, the plan for Mr. Saunders is to come back with Plumery Platte in the future. He did provide a, uh, concept plan in his, in his pack, and so at that time, he sees to be specific. There are two stub streets to the south that he would need to hook into the Greendale subdivision.
Right, but I know it's not unusual to get an ACHD report though for a rezone and a-
I think, I think if it was a Plumery Platte, we had some concern with the, it being a rezone, I think we're good to move forward.
Okay. How about, uh, ITD agreement would be in that development agreement as well, correct?
Yeah, proportion share will be part of the development agreement.
Okay. Any, any further questions of the applicant? Councilperson?
None.
None? Councilman Hershey?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so we're gonna close that public hearing and move on to council deliberations. No one signed up to speak?
Mayor Chawwic?
Councilman, Councilman Nielsen?
I approve that we approve, uh, Gary Saunders annexation zoning application.
I second that.
We got a motion and a second, um, any further discussion?
With, uh, Mr. Keyes's recommendation to follow the ACHD requirements and, and to include the proportion share agreement in the development agreement.
So that, Mayor Chawwic, the proportional share agreement language is already in the, the, uh-
Correct.
The application, and I guess in my opinion, it goes without saying that he would have to accept whatever recommendations ACHD provides. Motion stands.
Second stands too.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, welcome to the city. Okay, we're gonna, um, move on to item seven, reports, chief? Been waiting patiently back there.
Good evening, Jake Code, uh, Sheriff, Chief of Police. Couple things I wanna talk about, first of all, the radar trailer was delivered yesterday. And so we unpacked it and it's right now sitting over at, uh, Hunter Street Park within the, the confined, you know, fence over there. Um, until we can get it registered and get it legal for the road. We hope to have that done in the next week or so, so hopefully sometime next week, we should see that out, out and about. So I did wanna talk, what I had, uh, the council mayor is, um, some information on the reports that this device can give us. And, um, as you look through, the first couple pages is deal with putting the, you know, equipment on my computer, but the last two pages, um, I do just wanna address, uh, you know, we do have the, the speed compliance reports. It'll, it'll give us the information of speeds, dates, times, uh, traffic count. And again, it's also two directional, so even though it flashes and shows the speed that a violator may be going in one direction, it's still data collecting in both directions, and so we'll be able to get that. Uh, it also, uh, has a program that, once it has all that data, it can give us, uh, a best, uh, time and date to try and work the area for speed violators, help kinda, uh, be more efficient with our time. Um, I do have one question, so how I envision this is, you know, neighbors come to us complaining about speeding in a certain area. Uh, we often have, uh, either Neighborhood Watch or homeowner associations, you know, the presidents come to me and, and speak. So we, how I envision this is, we go out, we do the study, you know, whether it's a couple days or we get the data. I would like to provide the information to the citizens, but a question I have for council is, because the city is collecting data, do we have to go through a public information request? Is it something I can just give them?
Uh, you, you don't have to go through a public records request, uh, I, I think you'd wanna make it clear, uh, that that's how the process is gonna work. And so in some ways, when they first approach you and say, you know, we're looking for a study or that kinda data, that, we might consider that the request anyway. And the city's gonna go collect it and bring it back. Normally, when somebody requests information that we don't have, my, my default response is that doesn't exist. But in this case, uh, where it's a service that the city is choosing to provide, I, I think that process works okay.
Okay, and it, it doesn't collect any private information, it doesn't collect license plates, that information. Um, and it's just literally date, time, and speed, and direction of travel. Um, so, yeah, how I envision it is, once we get that stuff, I'll meet up with the, the groups again, um, and provide the data and kinda give them what our plan is to, to help work the solution, you know, in the future. So, uh, hopefully the next week, we can, we should see that out and about and, uh, help out with our, our speed issues. Are there any questions, Dan, with the mayor and council for the, the radar trailer?
Mayor Chawwic?
Councilperson Nielsen?
Thank you, Chief, I'm really excited that we've got this, uh, coming up. So, um, on the data collection, do you know how, how long the system will collect the data? Or do you have a, any idea in mind of where you will store the data and what sort of retention period?
So, uh, it's my understanding, let me backtrack, uh, councilman, uh, I do have a representative from the, the company coming out next week, hopefully Monday or Tuesday, and he's gonna sit down with me and give me a train on all that stuff, so I should have better answers than how I understand it. As soon as you, you know, turn it on and set your parameters in the control, it collects all, so whether or not you need one report or another, it has all the information that you could need. So then when you go through the app here, um, it's downloaded on a thumb drive. You go, you download it from the, the radar trailer, put it on my computer upstairs, I've already put the application on my computer. It'll dump the information, and then based on what the citizens are needing or what we need, um, I can tailor the report. Maybe I might need one report, but I don't need the other, or vice versa. Um, that data will then remain on my computer.
So, Mayor, Mayor Chawwic, I, I might recommend that we draft a, a policy around this data, just because your computer might die. Um, we may have the data at one point to be able to provide a report and then no longer be able to provide that more report. Right, just so that we, and, and I'd be happy to, you know, help with something like that. If we are gonna make it available, then we should probably be clear about that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Neil, uh, uh, Keyes? So, do you, uh, do you have access to, uh, any part of the city shared drive for, for the work you do for, on behalf of the city?
I don't believe so.
I think you do.
No.
So I'm, I'm thinking maybe that's something we can provide with the data there in the cloud and then, but-
I don't know if we can though, with your, is your equipment with the sheriff's office under a secure thing?
It is, it is, but I could envision, and I, I apologize, I'm not an IT person, so I default to, to, to professionals. Um, it could be something as simple as I put the information from the thumb drive on a city computer?
Yeah.
For that purpose, and then I also then put it on my computer for my purpose.
That might not that way.
Yeah, if that would work.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
And I, I just think there's a, there might be a conflict with our systems interconnecting because of the security of your system.
So, Mayor Chawwic, I, I might recommend that we have our, our city IT, our contracted IT professional, um, meet with, with the sheriff and the, the personnel from Easy Analyst when they come out, uh, just for the purpose of understanding what we can do as far as retention of data or to store. It may be in proprietary format and it may not be any good to store somewhere else.
You're the IT expert, so I-
Well, you have an IT expert on staff.
That's what I'm saying.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, um, and I'm not in any way trying to, uh, uh, talk Councilman Nielsen out of his idea of, uh, uh, data retention policy. Frankly, it's a great idea to amend any policy we might already have or created to look for this. Uh, Chief, so you talked about sharing data, are you talking about, uh, specifically with neighborhoods who request the use of this machine? Or are you talking about, uh, just publicly sharing this when it's just kinda out and about on normal collectors' materials and highways within the city, maybe in the newsletter or something like that, or what, what's your vision for sharing data?
How I, how I do see it, uh, originally is, uh, sharing that data with the, the requesters of the, the help. Um, I certainly could, you know, spread it beyond that. But, uh, how I see it right now is neighborhood A says there's speeders, we put the information out there, we let it run for a period of time, and then I share that data with them. That's how I, that's how I see it. But I could, uh, we could all, that's one good function of it, is because of the data collection, not just the, the speed, but the traffic count. It can also get us that, the, the traffic count if we have desires for some of our terminals, we can certainly do that also.
Okay, and, uh, uh, just as a, as an aside, I, I find just a little bit of irony in the fact that the manufacturer, the company makes the software is called Stalker.
Okay, cool. Anything else there?
Uh, and then just follow up with the, the council mayor, uh, we've had two applicants for a new detective position. Uh, one of them is a current star deputy, uh, the other one is a current detective in the tuna contract. And so next week, uh, towards the end of the week, we'll be, uh, sitting down with them and doing the, the interviews, and we should have an answer by next week of who that detective will be.
Yeah, will they have a start date of October one then?
Uh, uh, as, as close to October one is, as we can, yeah. Uh, the reason being, we have a, a, a two-week pay cycle and, um, our human resources can't transfer someone in the middle of a pay cycle, so we have to catch you there before, and it's always on a Sunday, every, every other Sunday. So we just gotta catch it on, on a pay cycle.
Perfect, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's Chief.
Sean, Ryan, anything? Chris? We'll start on Kevin.
I'll pass to Jennifer, to the councilwoman's side, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you, uh, so the-
Um, thank you. Uh, so the Pathways and Beautification Committee, um, uh, the chairman, he, as far, he was here tonight hoping to report as well, but I've noticed, last month, did we also not have committee reports?
No, we have reports.
We did, okay. Maybe he was out. Yeah, um, anyway, uh, so he gave me a, a few items here to, that wanted to highlight. Um, the first being, uh, the quarterly service award. The, the second quarter, um, recipient has been selected, and so that announcement will be coming out soon. Um, nominees are, it's open for nominees, so you can make a nomination, um, for the quarter three and fourth will be coming up. So there is a forum on the website if you would like to nominate someone, um, outstanding citizen and volunteer, um, or a business that goes above and beyond in our community. Um, the committee is also working on a design element plan, which I think will, uh, connect in with this, uh, sub-area plan as well, um, as we move forward with that. I think that we want to be sure that we commit, that we include that, um, Pathways Committee with that project. Um, Eagle Scout project, it has been funded. He, uh, is cleaning up the river. Uh, there's some barbed, barbed wire that he's taking down and, um, he's going to be, the Eagle Scout is, um, will be putting together some fences, so that's exciting. Make Star Shine will be on November seventh, so if there is seniors or people with disabilities that need to have their, um, with that assistance having their yard raked, we, that's the day. Um, you can find the application on the website as well and volunteer, or the committee was looking for volunteers. I think last year there was twenty-some volunteers that went out in the community and raked raked a number of homes, and, um, it's a great, great thing. Uh, so go to the website if you need assistance cleaning up your art yard or if you want to volunteer. Um, they are working on a bird habitat project at the Riverwalk, and we need some funding, so he'll get together with you. Matt will. It's not much.
Eagle raised that.
Maybe we'll find a donation. Um, and that, let's see, additional, oh, um, also they are, um, they would like to have some more, uh, dog cleanup areas down at the river. You've been down there and
You're talking the dog station?
Yes.
We got two more that put up.
Okay, so you have them. They just need to be put in, okay? And I am really pushing that we start working on the, um, bike pad plan, pedestrian plan, so we will hit on that.
So that's, that's what you were talking about, meeting with them about, on a roll?
Yeah.
So Sean must be with the committee.
That would be great. Should we want to be on a contact committee meeting? Can I invite you? Um, October seventh. Six fifteen.
We'll schedule a workshop that night.
Yeah, next committee meeting is October seventh at six fifteen. And that's all my committee meetings.
Okay. Councilman Keys?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has been, uh, engaged on the, uh, Canyon Highway District for, uh, impact fee, uh, study. Um, we had a, uh, committee, it was part of a presentation today with, uh, to Canyon County, uh, presenting our, our progress to date. And, uh, um, right now, I'm anticipating that sometime around January first timeframe, uh, we'll be ready to adopt that impact fee, uh, structure, uh, within, uh, Canyon Highway four and including the city of Star. If the council and the mayor are interested, uh, Chris Hopper from Canyon Highway District Number Four, uh, would be, um, available to come and do a presentation with the council of, uh, our project to date and stand for questions you may have about, uh, progress and about what's coming. Um, I'll, uh, if you guys want me to arrange that, please let me know, and I will. Uh, then also, uh, I had a, um, a tour yesterday hosted by Mayor Chadwick, uh, attended by Councilman Nielsen of the progress at nine sixty Main. And, uh, wow, they're going fast, and that's, that's gonna be an awesome facility for the city. So, uh, thanks for, for all your effort on that, Mr. Mayor. And that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
So let's, um, are you guys interested to hear about the impact fee stuff in my presentation on that? What's for October sixteenth, like? Because we didn't put this other one on there, so we should have a free spot.
Pretty busy.
Is it a busy one? So what do you, uh, can we do the second meeting on October?
I, I can ask.
Yeah, okay. Alright, Councilman Hershey?
Uh, the only committee that's meeting is wanting to report next week, or next meeting, uh, for a presentation, so I won't steal that thunder, so for now, until this COVID thing relaxes on some of my committees, that's my report.
Alright, um, just a couple things here. I do have a, a, a meeting with, uh, Mayor Rula Middleton to continue our discussions with. Uh, they have an act area between us. I'm also probably gonna, after Councilman Nielsen, or, uh, Keys had a meeting with, um, the Canyon County Planner, probably include her in that meeting.
Me too.
Yeah, yep. Um, the biggest thing, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of this, we just gotta be fire wise. Right now, we have a lot of dry grass in our foothills and a lot of properties and people that live up there, and fires are starting left and right in our communities right now, uh, in our state. And I just want to make sure that we all get the message out there to be wise. You know, we all like to shoot. We all like to, to go out and, and recreate and stuff, but, but a lot of times, we can, we can create our own device uh, by doing those things when it's really dry. So do whatever we can to protect our, 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 uh, citizens and their properties, uh, and our communities here, and, and Ms. Dana, um, put a post out there today, I think it was, right? Um, just reminding people of that, of that, of that nature there. Uh, with that said, that's all I have to report right now. Um, and I appreciate everybody's time, uh, and so we will, Major? Thank you. Ms. Maxine?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce myself to you now, since, since we're done.